Guess we better turn these on. If you could hit that button there on that, right in the middle. There you go.
Alrighty. You sit or stand? How do you prefer I do this?
However you want to do it.
Alright, I can stand.
Whatever you're comfortable with.
I just drove thirty minutes, so I'm good to stand.
Okay.
So, my name is Derek McKee. I'm with HighCom Incorporated. We are currently the telecom vendor for the county. Which means we take care of the phone systems, everything telecom related. Our history actually goes back twenty years with the county. And then there was a time when you guys used a different vendor, which we actually eventually bought that vendor out back in 2020. And that's how we came back around to see you guys again. The reasoning for my visit today would be to just kind of educate and ask you guys for permission to help you along with your phone bill. You guys are currently using an antiquated phone service from AT&amp;T that is very costly to the county. And I have other resolutions to replace those, which we have implemented in multiple counties and cities. Which you'll see generally about thirty to fifty percent savings on your phone bill. Most recently, we've taken care of Knox County. They're seeing about a fourteen hundred dollar a month savings on their phone bill. Green County saw about eighteen hundred dollars a month on their phone bill. So, once you do the math on that, you're talking about some pretty serious money. So, my reasoning today to be here is just to basically get your blessing to begin the process of exploring this for you guys. Working with Sheila and whoever else may be required to hand us over some information to start the investigation process. I'm not asking to sell you anything. I'm not asking to do anything other than just have your blessing to go ahead and explore that. To see if this type of technology would be something that would be beneficial to the county. When this all said and done, you do not have to buy a new phone system. You just simply may have to make some small upgrades to the one you have to allow for the type of technology that is available today. Because as this phone system was installed originally, twenty years ago, this technology that we have today wasn't even around then. So, a few modifications to allow your phone system to then work with the newer technology might be required when it's all said and done. But the savings that you guys make up on a monthly basis typically more than pay for any expenses you have in just a few months. So, basically today, not asking to buy anything, sell anything, or sign anything. Just the blessing to start the process to see if it's something you guys might be interested in pursuing.
I absolutely have no problem with that, and I'm going to speak for Sheila as well. Sheila has worked previously on phone issues from our landline issues to our cell. So, we'll take any help that we can get.
Absolutely.
I've been involved in some of that. She's done ninety-five percent of that work. So, don't necessarily know if it takes a motion to approve. We're just going to give you our blessing to move forward and bring us that information. I do have one thing I want to ask you about while you're here.
Sure.
And we're having some problems in our veterans office.
Yep, that was on my list to talk about.
So, if you could tell us a little bit about what's going on with that.
So, the phone line still physically sits at the old location where they were, and it needs moved to the new location. Which, that's going to be an AT&amp;T thing. So, we have no ability to call AT&amp;T to make those changes. It has to be somebody that's an approved person on the account. So, with that being said, I don't know how quickly that can be done. But we can do our part once AT&amp;T does their part. We just have to have somebody, maybe that Sheila, to call and request a service move for that line.
I think you're the only one that's on there that authorized.
Correct. Yep. Yep.
We'll get that taken care of and then contact you as soon as that happens.
And then moving forward, a couple of things to know about this service that we're working with. There's no contracts. So, some of the advancements in technology, the way people like to work anymore, we don't like to do contracts. The Netflix of the world, the Amazon Prime of the world, you can just cancel that stuff anytime. So, I think our industry is starting to see that. So, you're not going to get tied down to a long contract. You have not only a US-based but Indiana-based company that's going to be supporting this. So, when you call for any assistance, you're talking to a person who lives right here in Indiana.
That's great.
It was designed by a couple of guys out of Vincennes, Indiana. We've been using this type of service for about six years with them. And as mentioned before, we've got City of Brazil, Knox County, Green County, working on Sullivan County at the moment. So, amongst dozens and dozens of private sector companies. So, it's not a new technology. It's not anything I'm scared to implement. At a place like this, we do it quite regularly. So, once I spend the next few weeks doing some research on this, we'll be able to come back with some reports and let you know what you'd be up against if you decide to move forward.
And this goes out to all of our facilities?
It can, yeah. It absolutely can. So, the thing to be mindful of is occasionally, the way AT&amp;T works, you guys might be in the middle of some lengthy contracts. So, we have to kind of be mindful of that as we're looking forward to see sometimes the penalties that you would have to buy out of those contracts may be worth, which you're saving, it may not be worth. But that's something that we can actually explore during the process to find out where you're at. And we can do that on the stair stepping process. So, much like other counties we've worked with in the past, you'll find that the courthouse may be in one contract, and the jail may be in the middle of another contract at a different term. So, it might not be something we can snap our finger and do all at once. It may be an eighteen-month to thirty-six-month process to get you where you need to be. But at least you have, once you start the process and get your best foot forward, then you've got a plan in place, and you'll see light at the end of the tunnel. So...
It's important, and we've dealt with Sheila in this before, is to eliminate multiple vendors for the same product.
Correct.
That helps the paying process, eliminates the confusion of all these different companies that we're dealing with. So, the better that we can, sooner we can get that into one package that's we're all for.
And if you so choose, if the county so chooses, we can consolidate as many of your locations into one phone bill as you would like. If you want to drill all the way down, you can get one phone bill every month for the whole entire county.
By doing that, though, we break those departments out by utilities.
Totally get it.
Let me ask you this. If that bill came in as one, can you break it down by department on that bill?
Absolutely can, yeah. Yeah.
I know I was clarifying that for you, Sheila. Yeah, I know you don't want that.
A lot of the bills you're going to look at today from AT&amp;T and other companies, they don't want you to understand it. You can't possibly read and understand what's going on. I think that's by design. I didn't want you to be an educated consumer. They want you to just pay the bill that comes in every month and not question anything. So, we'll simplify it for you as best as we can.
Sounds real good. Looking forward to it.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And I've got some handouts. I know you guys get stacks of paper, but if you want to see something, I'll be glad to leave something here.
Sure. Just leave it all with Sheila, and she can pass them out to us.
Fair enough. Great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Susan, planning and zoning.
You should have a rezon application that was approved by the Planning Commission last month for the property in Freedom that Leonard White owns. The Overland Group filed for a rezon from agricultural to commercial to build a Dollar General. The gentleman with the attorney for Overland is here, if you want to speak, if you want him to speak on anything regarding this. They have met all the requirements, and if changes that were required at the meeting, they have resubmitted the plans with those changes.
And I'm in favor of this, and it's got a favorable recommendation, and I know Bob sits on that committee. The only question I have is, the Highway Department has some questions. Did we get those taken care of?
I've spoken with Bob about that. Those have been solved, and we have new blueprints to do what we asked for.
Okay.
That was for the drainage to the north too, right?
Pardon?
That was for the drainage to the north too, down that basin area.
That is correct. They have changed everything that they were asked to change, and it isn't in the blueprints.
Very good. Joel, do you have any?
I know.
Okay. Do we approve this through the ordinance, or the ordinance with the?
The ordinance would be oh four.
Oh five. Ordinance is oh four?
Yeah.
Do you want to read that, if you have it?
Sorry. Okay. This is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh four. It's an ordinance to amend the Owen County zoning and subdivision control ordinance. Now therefore be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners of Owen County, Indiana. Section one, the Owen County zoning and subdivision control ordinance as amended is hereby amended to rezone the following described real estate situated in Franklin Township, Owen County, Indiana. That description is on the large exhibit. But it's more commonly known as fifty-four eighty-one Main Street in Freedom. The general location is eight point seven miles southwest of the Owen County courthouse. And the parcel numbers affected are sixty dash sixteen dash seventeen dash four hundred dash two ninety point zero one zero dash oh seventeen and sixty dash sixteen dash sixteen four dash four hundred dash two ninety point oh one oh dash oh seventeen. Section two, the above described real estate should be and the same is hereby rezoned from residential to business. Section three, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption. Adopted and passed by the Board of Commissioners of Owen County, Indiana in a regular meeting held on the twenty-first of February, twenty twenty-four. And there is a place for you to put, whether you're yay or nay, and signatures from each of our passengers.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve order number twenty twenty-four zero four, an ordinance to amend the Owen County zoning and subdivision control ordinance? And this also includes a rezon from agricultural to business?
I made a motion. Remember, we approved twenty two oh two four zero four.
I have a motion by Bob. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joel. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Affleck policy. Do we have anything on that?
There were changes that were going to be needed. However, changing the policy to go back without entrance, so that might change, so...
Put it over in the next meeting? Okay.
Probably need to do an admin meeting where the changes were there and the changes that are going to be needed for the new payroll system somewhere pretty soon. Because they're requesting a lot of changes. And Dana's seen a few of them already, but I just think we need to get together. But this is one of them that was wanting to change based on that policy, so there's no sense in approving it to turn around.
Correct. Why don't we try to get together here in the next couple of days and figure out a good day to sit down and have those discussions as an administrative meeting? We can do that sometime after the meeting today or tomorrow. Okay, thank you. John Parmley. There you are. I was looking for you out there.
I'm moved.
John is with Epic Insurance, our insurance company. Thank you.
So, you have in front of you a summary of your insurance, I guess, if you would say, year-over-year comparison. And there's quite a few pages there. We won't go through all of them. I can if you want. But this breaks down the premium renewal. Couple of things I would tell you. I mean, I'll tell anybody, we've had a lot of wind, as your wind and hail. The property market is very interesting today, and it has changed a great deal. I believe it's going to settle out a little bit. But starting in last November, you know, we had a lot of changes in the property market on how the deductibles and different things, and so forth and so on. So, we went through, so I'll give you the highlights. I mean, you go down, your overall property, overall complete premium is up eighteen percent year-over-year. We have the budgetary numbers up by thirty-six percent. We increased all building values by five point four percent. We increased some of your inland marine coverage. Inland marine is your equipment that is the different departments. Those values are up about six percent year-over-year. And payrolls are up eleven percent year-over-year. So, that's all factored into the eighteen percent increase. As you can see on your sheet, the majority of that is in the property. And that has to do with just the simple property market, if you will, across the, really, it's across the Midwest. I'm involved in every other week calls, and we're talking about property markets. Deductible changes. Liberty is changing deductibles to one percent per building on hail. That is becoming more and more common. I will tell you that I have, I'm waiting on one more option that will, simply on the property, if we can get that done, we'll cut that deductible in half, and we've given them a target premium to shoot at. We were hoping to have that yesterday, but I don't have it yet. So, all in all, I think we're moving in the right direction. Our experience mod on the work comp has went from one point three, I'm sorry, one point two-three to one point one-six. It's trending down. The experience mod is claims versus payroll paid in, how many claims you've had. And it's a three-year running average, not including the last year. And so, we've had accident review boards, claim investigations. Really, we've had a pretty good year outside of hate. And we can't control that. But the interesting thing, I've been doing this for twenty-seven years. Typically, when we have a hail loss, we have it in an area. It will be, you know, it'll be a band across the state, like what you experienced, right, with Sullivan and White. It went through there. We usually have one of those. This year, we had nine of them across the state. I have some accounts in northern Indiana that got pummeled, just like you did, outside of Lafayette, west of Lafayette, I'm sorry, east of Lafayette, wrong direction, east of Lafayette. You know, we got hit down south. So, it's becoming more of an issue. Now, I say all that, it's going to shake out in our industry. I mean, the carriers that are going to come in and deductibles, it's going to shake out at some point. And I think that I could come back here three months from now and probably give you a better tale of where I think it ended up. But that's where we're at for today. We went through the review. The list in your sheets that you have, be like the third or fourth page, is a statement of values. That shows all the locations, and it shows you the values that we have on each one of those. And then we have a work comp audit payrolls. So, you can see where our payrolls have went from twenty twenty all the way to twenty-four, twenty-five, and what we're estimating. And I got some of that information from you to try to estimate those. When we took over, you were getting pretty sizable audits. We've got rid of those because we've got a pretty good projection on what our payroll is. She's handing that to me. It's good for me. And then there's also, I included a list of vehicles. Last year, if you'll remember, we took it to market. One beacon was pulling out of the market. We went to Liberty. I talked to a few other markets this year with the claims and with the property. They were pretty uncomfortable. I mean, I think, and I think we should wait. I don't think you should do it every year. I don't think it benefits you. We are in the process of talking to other markets. I have other markets. That's a whole good discussion in and of itself. So, and that's a fast run-through of your insurance. There are a couple of applications that I need signed that I have here that I can leave. On your cyber, your cyber premium did not go up, and your crime premium did not go up. We're in compliance with all the state statutes. There's some new coverages for invoice manipulation. That's in there. Social engineering, that's in there. That's fast.
Appreciate that, John. And our IT got everything taken care of as far as the cybersecurity.
Correct, yeah.
Things good there, okay.
The IT answered all the questions, and insurance carrier's good with those. So, we're all good there. We're all good there.
Well, I don't think any of us sitting in this room didn't expect it to go up due to the fact of the millions of dollars' worth of damage that this county took. And we're sitting underneath two million dollars' worth of damage on the roof of this courthouse. Matter of fact, about two point four. So, that is in the process. We're getting close to getting that approved and moving forward. Sheila, I don't know how we're doing on the money part. We had some money sent to us initially to cover some of the roof. Some of those bills have started to come in, and I know that we have some more to go, so...
Yeah, so, we should have pretty well firm, I got the information that I wanted from Steve today, that confirmed what I thought. So, I would say we ought to have a pretty good feel on that. I mean, my goal's middle of next week at the latest. I'm truly trying to push to the end of this week so that we can move forward here. And then from the monies, I think that probably just needs to be a side discussion, and we sit down and build a spreadsheet and make sure we're good. And I can do that. I mean, I can help.
Yeah, because we're going to need more money coming in.
Yeah, and there's more coming. I'm well aware of that. I just want to make sure that, like the conversation we had out there, that we don't miss a vehicle by five hundred bucks or six hundred dollars. I mean, and I'm going to have to have a little bit of help from you to make sure that we're just on the same page. I think we are. But think isn't good enough in my world. I want to know we are.
Yeah.
And I'm going to need a little assistance from you to make sure we know. Yeah, I mean, I see it from one side, you see it from another, and I want to make sure that those sides go together.
Well, you've been outstanding working with us. Anytime that we call or need to talk to you, you're always there. We appreciate that. I know I do, and I'm sure Sheila does as well. And Dana's talked to you. Sheila, jump right in here.
Do you have, so, the vehicle that was discussed a while ago, if we find that it is something from the twenty twenty-three, can it still be added to the twenty twenty-three total? To bring forward, then there's still four hundred and fifty-eight thousand in that line item that we carried forward for all of the pending storm damages. I just wouldn't want to put something on this year as for something that happened in June.
Won't be an issue. We just need to make sure that we verify going in, know it going in, I think that's the right term, know it going in. And then I also fully expect that, you know, all the estimates that we have on the roosting, those damages continue to get repaired. And same was said can be said for vehicles, that there will be some additions. We should be pretty good, but there will be additions, and we're aware of that. That's not an issue. That's where I need to make sure that I'm aware of that, you know, because sometimes you may see those and I don't. And so, that's just a conversation, not a big deal. We'll figure it out.
Yeah, it's never been a big deal with you, John. You make it pretty simple.
Well, we try to make it simple. I mean, you know, I'm not going to say there haven't been times you've called me, I've scratched my head a little bit, and go, thanks for getting answer, but I'll figure it out, so...
Yeah, we do, and we appreciate it. So, gentlemen, with that being said, this insurance is due up again in March, the first of March, as you see on the renewal dates. So, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve Epic Insurance for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five through these periods.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion by Bob. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want these applications this way, or do you want them sent to you electronically, and we can do them in DocuSign? Or do you want them sent to you electronically so you can look at them?
Yeah.
That's probably what I thought. Okay, that's fine.
And we'll sign them after everything.
Yeah, that's perfect. And I'll just copy them.
Do you have any other questions, Sheila, before we?
So, this renewal was March the eighth, are we going to have all this done and be able to pay the claims by March the eighth? Because we have a good bill for this last year.
Oh, you won't be able by March eighth, so I'm not too concerned about it. So, yeah, we'll have it in effect, and we'll give you the billing, but you're not, those billings, when we send them to you, you'll have probably thirty days on them. And I will tell you this, if we send you a bill and it has a due date prior to one of your meetings, just tell me. It's no big deal. I just tell them, I do enough public interviews, I did it. It has to go through corporations. Just tell me what it is. I'll make it fix. Not a big deal.
Sheila, do you have one of these folders that we have?
Okay.
And I can send you that electronically as well.
Everything I need right here. Thank you, John.
Alright.
Appreciate it very much. Capital asset ordinance.
Yes, the State Board of Accounts found that we do not have a chart of the useful life of the different types of equipment. Land doesn't depreciate, but the equipment does, personal property like that. So, I pulled together a couple, three lists that are representative of what that would look like in the ordinance. So, I pulled together a couple, three lists that are representative of what that would look like in the ordinance. And so, we just need to go through it and make sure that everything that we have is on that. And so, then once we do that, we simply adopt it, so.
So, we can probably do that again in administrative meeting when we talk about some of these other policies. I'm sure you've got all the asset plans from the different departments.
Well, everybody's been, yes.
Okay. Well, can you put the squeeze on the ones that don't?
John's list will help fill in probably 95% of it.
Some of the vehicles and stuff, okay.
So, it's just a matter of updating and incorporating the provision that the State Board of Accounts wants. And Dana has been working on it, so.
Right, and I talked to him a little bit about that as well. So, yeah, we can come up with those determinations at that time. And again, we'll try to schedule that meeting here next week sometime or next couple of weeks. And then payroll policies. I'm assuming that that's what we just discussed with...
So, I think there's an ordinance coming up when he's doing it. It was part of changing some of them for the new payroll system that we're having. So, just table it until the administrative and we can figure out exactly what those policies need to say to. He's probably got 20 policies in front. I mean, that has either came from allow system for the new payroll system or just like this for State Board of Accounts and the asset management plan. Hopefully, in a month, we might be able to have more.
Lot of extra work on top of everything else, so, absolutely.
And the best trade meeting would really help move that along.
Yeah, there's a lot there we can discuss and get knocked out. So, again, we'll try to, after the meeting, pick a day and see what we can come up with. Highway.
Good morning, Commissioners. Commissioners, I don't have a lot to come before you today. I would like to read in Morgan Township before the day is out, if you have time. If not, I could go to the next meeting.
We're good right now.
Okay. Just a couple of reports, Commissioners, for your next meeting. Bridge bids should be in for Class Road Bridge, Bandy Road Bridge. We were already planning to put those out for bid for a fall build. Commissioners, I think that it's important that when 194 comes in, which is the Bandy Road Bridge, that that is a pretty main thoroughfare, that that bridge be built immediately. That being said, got a pretty healthy balance in 1169. I'm believing I'll have to go ask for an added appropriation to build that bridge out of 1169 this year in order to get it built quickly. Just a little bit of a forewarning. We don't like to do that. We like it to come directly out of bridge. But that's the only way that I can see that this bridge gets built.
That bridge is currently closed.
It is currently closed. Next thing, Commissioners, that I have during the council meeting, the last, last council meeting, there was an approval for Freeman Road to be paved. We are going to start the ditching process next week. I feel that it's important, especially where we're working on the hill, known as Freeman Hill, just as we leave town here, that that be closed while my people are working. It's going to be pretty impossible to get any kind of ditching work done on that hill. Trying to work lane control there, Commissioners. I just wanted to forewarn you. I think we could do that project in a week to 10 days on the hill. The rest of the ditching process, I think, can be lane restriction. But we want to get that started.
At that point, I'm thinking here, they can go on out to Timber Ridge and come back up to Freeman Road from the backside if they need to get around there.
That or 43.
Right, one of the two.
Now, that being said, we could work emergency personnel through.
Through it.
If there needs to be police or ambulance, fire, we will get them through. Commissioners, this came up this morning. I really haven't had a chance to talk with any of you in regard to this. I spoke a little bit yesterday with Commissioner Burton Malais on. There has been some issues with Coalliance on our fuel. We have ran out of fuel three times now. Coalliance came with a proposal that we add a 2,000-gallon tank to the tanks that we have. Commissioners, we own all the tanks that are at the county garage, and that was done so we could shop market in different vendors every year. The cost of a 2,000-gallon tank is $8,000. We did not budget for that this year. I don't feel like it is the highway department nor the county's fault. It is our vendors' fault that they can't keep fuel to us. They will provide a 2,000-gallon tank and lease it to us at no cost. That would be at the commission's desires, how we handle that. If not, I would ask the Commissioners, maybe out of Q and C or something, because it's permanent there to purchase the tank. But I don't have it in my budget. And again, I don't believe it's anyone's fault, but our vendor.
Greg, is it necessary that we have that much more additional fuel on hand? Or is this, is this just to cover up a Lax and Daisy delivery system? I guess what I'm asking is, do you need, do you want that much more fuel?
We used 52,000 gallons of fuel last year. We pump a lot of fuel. And it depends on what we're doing. If we're in some type of weather emergency, whether it be snow, whether it be storm, I have to have fuel there all the time. And I had that conversation with them. And then after I had that conversation, they let us go an entire day without fuel. So, I have a major, major problem with that. So, we either need, and I spoke with a representative yesterday, and their only resolve was to add 2,000 gallons, which tells me that they're not going to be able to service our fuel like we need to be serviced.
So, my question was this, and I'm going to ask the attorney. We approved their price in the bid process.
That's correct.
But they are not fulfilling their obligation. So, there are other fuel companies out there without getting into a situation where we need to put a 2,000-gallon tank in that we shop at. And I just want to make sure that we're okay with that. They cannot uphold their end of the agreement.
Right. And if they are not holding their end, then you can put that part back out for bid. And it may be that you can, depending on what the value would be, whether you can just get quotes or...
That's what we prefer to do. And Greg, I'm going to leave that up to you if you want to go that avenue. If you want to test that market, there's other suppliers out there, Terre Haute, Bloomington, that we can get fuel from. If you want to try that before we make a decision on whether to buy a tank. I don't want a vendor to force us to spend money because they can't do their job.
Well, and also, we know that at some point in time, the highway garage has been used for auxiliary fueling of other equipment within the county. So, it's very important that a vendor step up or we find somebody that can.
Commissioners, it became very serious Friday with the impending storm. We had no on-road fuel. I couldn't get a fuel delivery, and we pumped all of our off-road fuel under our trucks. We had fuel to push snow. That's just how serious it is.
Do you want to pursue other vendors to see if they can provide us with service? Or do you want to, do you feel the 2,000-gallon tank is a necessity? Obviously, we've not had problems in the past if we have...
There was never any problems in the past. Quite frankly, I, up until now, I think we have had very good service with Coalliance. But what I'm saying is their resolve now isn't better service. Their resolve is adding fuel.
Are they doing the same thing for the Sheriff Department? Are they delivering to the Sheriff Department or who's doing it?
I, I assume that they deliver to the EMS and Sheriff's Department, but I can't answer that question.
Chris, do you know that?
That's who we, we do shop around occasionally to see who's cheapest, and they're always cheapest. But I do know that they are in between drivers right now. They had a driver leave and they're...
I think that's what they told Greg, they were short help.
That might be, that might be the cause behind it, but...
And I, yes, I've been told that, that they have been in between drivers.
More than once.
More than once. They had a driver that'd been there for years that never let us run out of fuel. I, Commissioners, it doesn't, they've been a good vendor up until now. But I don't feel like I should have to buy the tank, which has been the county's policy. And to own the tank so we could get fuel from other locations. So, guidance is what I'm asking for.
I say you shop other vendors as long as the other Commissioners are in the period.
I concur wholeheartedly.
Buy it on the open market where there's the best price and you can get it delivered to us.
Did they offer a tank up at no cost?
Yeah, the tank would be at no cost if the Commissioners agree.
Oh, they did it? Okay.
But that's not, but we own all the other tanks, that's my question. Can I let them set that tank?
Why would you offer up a 2,000-gallon tank when you can't keep the current tanks full?
Yeah, that's the other thing.
That doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, I guess, guess it does a little bit, because you'd have the surplus they wouldn't have come as often there on that and stuff.
That's a good point.
If they can get the other tank and fill...
If you're doing all right with Chris down there and stuff, maybe we probably prod him a little bit, say, well, this and that and stuff, and see what they say. If they make a guarantee on, if they put the bigger tank in there. Of course, I realize it's their tank, but we just leave the others there that we got, so in case...
They need to stay in place also. There'd be 3,000 gallons of on-road fuel there at a time.
Yeah, if you, you know, sending that tank's going to be their expense, not ours.
Well, I think we should let the superintendent work this out. Go both directions with this. Either work with Coalliance and/or find somebody else.
Well, Commissioners, I wouldn't be in front of you discussing fuel if I hadn't already tried. I don't feel like the drivers having and being between drivers right now is an excuse. The highway department needs to push snow or has a weather event. They know what our needs are. And when we call and say we're out of fuel, I should expect fuel there that day, not 48 hours later.
No, absolutely.
So, I wouldn't be in front of you if I thought this was a problem that could be solved with new driver, new service.
So, you feel that new vendor is the option?
There are tanks, if we're out of fuel, I think we should have the option to call somebody and come fill our tanks if they can't get it.
And that's the way I think that we should go.
But that's...
That's it. I don't want, I say we use them, but if they can't service, I should be able to... There are tanks, we should be able to call and buy fuel.
You start today making those phone calls to other fuel vendors and get them on the line.
Thank you.
We have a bidded amount. We pay, maybe even work with these other vendors and say, hey, this is where we're at. But hey, we're willing to...
We could put it in a motion if you want to, Greg.
Well, yeah, you, certainly, I think we should.
Yeah. Ask for a motion for the highway superintendent to shop vendors for additional fuel purchase due to the lack of support from our current supplier.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion by Joel. Have it here a second.
Sergeant.
Second by Bob, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And before I would purchase fuel from another vendor, I would call and let this commission know. Next on the list, Commissioner, Commissioner Lowe contacted me in regard to the Amish community wanting several roads in Jefferson Township reopen. I've done some research on two of those roads. I want to bring them up. One, Commissioners, is Davis Drive. The other would be Cat Road. I cannot find any record that those roads in their entirety have ever been on the county inventory. Now, that being said, I'm sure they were a township road at one time. And for whatever reason, the Board of Commissioners at the time didn't pick those roads up. Portions of those roads have been reopened to homes or were never closed throughout the years. But I do believe the portions of Davis Drive and Cat Road are moot point, they cannot be opened because we do not possess them.
And I support that. You're not going to open something that's a private road that's not on county inventory.
And I, and I want to make clear that I also support it. That's why I went to Greg about this, because the pressures ever increasingly out there, they find these paths. And me and Greg spoke at length and walked some of these and things of that nature. The reality of it is, we don't know who owns it. And the reality of it is, 50, 60 years have passed. We can't bear the burden. I'm already making an attempt to open one section of road to help them. However, we cannot, we cannot bear the responsibility or the cost of opening these roads back up. They're gone for a reason. So...
Well, Commissioners, if I did believe these roads to be on inventory or had been on inventory where they needed vacated, I would go through that process like I've requested to be done with Roland Road. But I wanted you to be aware that there is nothing that tells me that we possess the parts of those roads that have been closed. I believe some of them, 80, 90 years.
Susan, can you pull those areas up on the map so we can see who owns that property or who it shows that owns that property? And you may have already done that, I don't know, but I'd like to see it.
I have, and I know there's one thing we can't do is we can't landlock anybody with those situations. But what I, what I'm telling the commission is, I don't believe the highway department has any jurisdiction over those areas any.
Oh, absolutely.
Because they've never been a part of...
Yeah, if they're not part of our inventory, then it's no concern of the county.
I, you know, I know the township inventories were there at one time, but I find even nothing in regard to that on those two locations.
And I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, that these in question, paths, roads, township, basically succumb to the landowners on either side or both sides. It marries in the middle. I've had this conversation with them, and I don't know that, like Greg, I don't know that we have to take any legal action. I believe that those roads are just, they just don't exist.
Well, I've been in front of this board many times and asked for legal actions on roads, but I was asked in regard to these two particulars, actually in the third, Roland. Roland needs to be vacated. And I know Dana may have that information today. It may be for a different meeting. But Davis and Cat Commissioners, I do not believe on the park that is not occupied by anyone is the highway department's any responsibility bearing with the highway.
I'll accept that.
I think we're just, that's that. Thanks, Greg.
Before I read in Morgan Township, Commissioners, if we still have time, Jones Road is a community crossing project road. There is quite a large culvert that would take a large excavator being rented. I've asked for quotes. I received two back to have the one large culvert installed on Jones Road. They're out of raffles. We put the paperwork out so everybody can be bidding the same. I'll give those to Dana.
Okay, the first bid for providing that excavator is Fender Excavating LLC. Bid amount of $17,000.
Greg, is this work only, we're providing the pipe, I'm assuming?
Second bid is from DuBois Excavating, and their bid is $18,200. These two bids.
Thank you, Dana. Any questions, any comments?
Okay, I have just, commissioners, the reason I asked this um, uh, be quoted out is um, because of the um, size of the pipe and the equipment needed um, to put it in and um, the rental it would cost for that because we don't possess it. Just to make the commission aware for the length of time that I believe I would need the excavator and uh, and to put my men there, that the cost of the excavator rental would be somewhere around twelve thousand dollars.
Not including man hours?
Not including man hours. So um, I, I believe with the rental of the excavator that we would need uh, and the man hours we would put in, I would ask that the commissioners accept uh, the lowest quote. We've done business uh, with these, both these individuals before and both do a good job.
Well, there's no comment. Do I hear a motion to approve Fender Excavating uh, for the pipe uh, job on Jones Road?
I make motion to approve Fender's bid of seventeen thousand dollars for work on Jones Road.
Got a motion by Bob. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joel. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, do we still have time for Morgan Township?
Yeah. We should probably uh, have a vote on closing Freeman Road.
Oh, I thought we did, but we must've talked around that, huh?
Yeah.
Need a motion to approve the closure uh, for the work on Freeman Road uh, during the ditching process down the hill.
Yes.
I don't know how else to put that.
I'll make a motion to close Freeman Road during the uh, ditching process for the time period specified by Superintendent Milton.
What would the hours be on that, Greg?
Pardon?
What would the hours be on that?
Eight to three.
And eight to three added to that motion?
Do you make it eight to three thirty? Eight thirty, three thirty? That gives everybody on that road a half hour to get into work.
I, we can start at eight thirty. I would still prefer to close at three because we shut down, if we shut down at three thirty, gentlemen, that I'll be paying guys overtime. So I would, I would assume the eight thirty to.
Well, I'm just trying to be courteous to everybody out there because that's one of the heavy traveling roads, so.
Okay. amended eight thirty to three?
amended eight thirty-three. Uh, dates, dates uh, provided by Highway Superintendent Milton.
Thank you, Joel. Good point.
Thank you.
Got a motion by Joel. I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Sheila.
On the uh, Fender Excavating, can we start completing when you do use to go ahead and pay the clinics out of cycle? Cause, cause when he gets done, he's gonna be telling them again and then we're finished. So if we can, can we do that ahead of time since the amount's already in?
I'll make a motion to pay Fender's excavating out of cycle, work completed on Jones Road.
Got a motion by Joel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Sheila. Okay, gentlemen, uh, Morgan Township, um, we'll start with uh, Bedarris Road with an addition of point five, five miles. Portagarus Road, no change. Sharden Road, no change. Wardlaw Road will have an addition of point zero nine miles. Graceland Court uh, will have an addition of point zero two miles. Valley Hills Drive, no change. Forest Ridge Road has an addition of point uh, one miles. Schmidt Road will have an addition of point zero one miles. Anderson Road, no change. Hickson Hill Road will have an addition of point zero five miles. Hale Hill Road, no change. West Six Hundred North uh, will have no change. Magnus Road, no change. Mud Road, no change. Hickson, uh, let's see, another portion of Hickson Hill will have no change. Jordan Village Road, three point two miles, two nine miles, no change. Uh, Arnie Road, one point one nine miles. With uh, a change of point uh, one miles. Rude Road, no change. Beamer Station Road, let's see, and it was, excuse me, commissioners, I didn't give you the mileage, point five six miles. Beamer Station Road, two point seven two miles, no change. Flowing Wells Road, one point four seven miles, no change. Union School, one point six, zero six miles, no change. Harris Road, one point three miles, excuse me, point one three miles, no change. Okay, commissioners, Lennox Road has been certified in two sections. Uh, the first section is point three uh, five miles with an addition of point zero three miles and the second section is point um, three two eight. Those will be recertified together as one road. There's really no reason why it is that way. Hodge Road, point um, six, zero miles with an addition of point zero three. Wildhammer Road, point six four miles, no change. Uh, King Keen Road, point one five seven miles with an addition of point eight five miles. Uh, West Road, point zero six miles with an addition of point zero one miles. North Street, point zero six miles. Al Hall Road. It's going to be another one of those situations, commissioners, where it's been certified in two pieces. We're gonna certify it all in one to a total of two, two point nine seven miles with an addition of point zero one miles. County Road Seven Seventy-five uh, West will be, is actually Jarred Chapel Road. It will be recertified as Jarred Chapel Road with four point three six miles, no change. Commissioners, that is Morgan Township.
Several changes in that township.
Yes. Uh, and those changes are to the positive where we should get better revenue in regard to that.
Anything else today?
No, commissioners, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Do I hear a motion to approve the uh, Morgan Township uh, road certification changes?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion by Joel. Do I hear a second? Second by Bob. All in favor? Aye. That being said, we're elected officials and department heads. Chris.
You guys found an update on what's going on with um, our ambulances. Took twenty-three fifteen over to the body shop yesterday. So talked to him about the importance of trying to get that back before April eleventh, no, I'm sorry, April eighth. I was given no promises, but hopefully, hopefully we'll have it. The truck that's out in New Jersey, um, I already got tickets to fly out there on the fifth, drive it back on the sixth. So um, I've already requested the VIN for that truck so that we can get it added to our insurance.
Thank you.
Cover it when we drive it back. Yeah, just preparing for um, April eighth. I ordered about, well, it was a little fifteen hundred dollars worth of supplies yesterday to try to beef up some of our, well, for, for our little side-by-side we're gonna use around town to supply those with, with some equipment. So um, it's coming with the cost April eighth is, but we have to do what we have to do.
We have to be prepared. Chris, I got a question for you. It may not fall on you. Jack may be able to answer it. I don't know, but is any of our departments or chamber, are they providing classes for the citizens that are coming into our community? The viewing glasses, have we?
Robads is ordering ten thousand pair and the chamber's putting out that that is the glasses place. That's where they're recommending everybody go get the glasses. I know Department of Homeland Security is bringing a few pair uh, to, to my office and I know Sheriff White has purchased glasses for his um, employees and family. So that's about all I know about glasses.
I just, my son brought a pair home from, from DNR out here to State Park. So I think they've got them out there. They're selling them too. I'm not sure, but I think they're selling them out there.
Christine, you're shaking your head. Is the health department buying some of this or?
Oh, well, they're our school liaison. We partner with the school. So each school, each student will get one.
I just want to make sure citizens know that we do have them available and where they can get them and that kind of thing. So appreciate that.
Yeah, that's, that's, I'm glad that you brought that up because that's what I was wondering. All my guys are gonna be working and I thought maybe I could buy some for all of our guys.
They have to have, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I could tell if I looked at the sun, but.
Looks first thing they do.
But I think, I, I think if they're gonna work, you know, that day for us, that we'll have to find what's in glasses.
Absolutely.
To view it while they're there. So um, just gonna look at the sun. And then um, the, the last thing I have is um, I, I talked to the county council about reducing um, my office assistance um, hours to part-time hours. And I wanted to get that blessing from you guys also.
Chris, that uh, obviously is entirely up to you. You know what the workload is at your department. I know that it's been a big help to have that person to get things under control for you because hard to be out on the road and dealing with issues that you deal with and do that paperwork, but uh, if part-time fits that schedule, then we're perfectly fine with it. I, I guess we can put that in a matter of a motion since it is a commissioner-appointed position with Chris. Uh, so do I hear a motion to approve?
She's losing her insurance too.
Yes, she'd be going part-time. She'd lose her benefits. And she's fine with that, right? I mean, this was certain.
She's fine with it. She's, she does very good at keeping our, keeping everything up. I mean, as far as she's real efficient. She did have a lot of work ahead of her when she first came on, but she's got us kind of caught up and, and has us streamlined now. So she is aware that, that, that would drop insurance and she's, she's okay with that.
So that being said, do I hear a motion to approve, uh, Chris to reduce his staff to part-time instead of full-time as his, in his administrative uh, office position?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion by Joel. Do I hear a second? Have a second by Bob. All in favor? Aye.
That's all I have. Unless you guys have any comments, concerns for me?
I think that's it right now. We'll get to some stuff that we talked about here in just a minute. Any other elected official? Jack? Or department head?
I guess that's where I fit in. So I have three things. Uh, the first is the five tornado siren locations have all been identified. Suzanne has sent those to Dana. We're waiting on his blessing for either right away or easement before we spray an X on the ground and then Mike will call in locates. Mike Dyer with ECS will be the one calling in the locates and then we'll be ready to schedule the installation of the poles and the sirens. So we're very close.
Jack, these are the ones that we approved with the ARPithones?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Arnie, Jordan Villa, Jackinsonville area, uh, now up in the Quincy area at forty-six and two forty-six. And what am I forgetting Suzanne? One more. Two thirty-one and sixty-seven.
Yeah.
Close, close to that. Near the carpet park. So that's, that's the areas that are identified. Like I say, we're, we're ready to spray an X on the ground. The next thing I have is I have heard through the rumor mill that the tanks at the EMS, the fuel tanks that we use at the EMS may be going away. And I am here today to encourage the commissioners not to do that. Uh, I think we all remember what happened on the afternoon of nine eleven. There were lines out to the street and around the corner to get fuel. We didn't have to worry about that. We had our own fuel. If the town loses power, we don't have to worry about that. We have our own fuel. I think we need to remain uh, self-reliant on, on having our own fuel. We don't have to worry about commercial gas stations. Um, you know, my job's all about being ready and able to respond no matter what the condition is. And I think that would be detrimental to our ability to respond during a disaster if we don't have our own fuel. So I hope you keep that in mind when you make your decision. The last thing I have.
Touch on that real quick. I don't know that they were ever going to go away. It was just the fact that we were looking at fleet fuel cards to help people that are outside that can't get back in here to get fuel uh, throughout the county or if there's a transport going to Bloomington and they need to get fuel, they have access to that. That was more the conversation. There's been a ton of problems with the fuel reimbursement fund, uh, some issues with that. So that's why it was discussed.
I see. Well, I, I know that those fuel cards would have helped Greg on Friday. You know, he would have, he would have had a, a, you know.
I don't know. The sheriff is a big uh, supporter of that as well. So uh, and it, matter of fact, I've contacted the company and waiting for a response. So it's moving pretty slow.
Fuel Cloud, is that what you're talking about?
No, it's called uh, WEX, W E X, Fuel Fleet. There's a, I forget, a hundred and seven thousand different fueling locations with that card. Didn't realize there was that many gas stations or whatever, but apparently there are.
Uh, and the last thing I have is the local grant application process and the hard copy of the grant application. I brought this up in the last meeting. That is very antiquated. I don't know if Sheila has updated the actual hard copy application, but the process is antiquated and I think it's just a matter of time till it knocks us out of some grant opportunities. The, sometimes these grant opportunities, the, what they call the uh, notice of funding opportunity and the grant application deadline are a pretty short window. And if I follow the ordinance that the county commissioners and county council have in place, I can see where it would knock us out of, of some grant opportunities. It may have been a good idea back when it, when it was done. I think it was done originally to, to track federal grants because we couldn't have more than three or I remember something like that, but in my opinion, it, we need to have some sort of a digital workaround where we can, can get uh, an email approval from the county commissioners, the county council and move forward if it's time sensitive and request that. That, that current uh, ordinance doesn't have any, anything in it like that. So I'd like you guys to look at that and kind of bring it up to twenty twenty-four and at least get Angie Lawson's name off the application.
Absolutely.
So.
Dana, if you could look into that, see what we need to do. Kind of, again, that would be another thing that we could add to that administrative meeting, but now a little.
And Jack, I'll, I'll take that a step further and say that we should probably uh, deal with this sooner than later. Uh, I know at any time somebody wants to apply for a grant within the county, it's kind of a regular road to get there. We're talking about uh, goodwill attempts to get this county some money. So I stand with you on that. As far as I'm concerned, it needs to be sooner than later. If we can't make it as much as your uh, couple commissioners. If we can't make it as soon as your, uh, couple commissioners give you the okey-dokey on the tele, you know, it, it should-
It always calls.
It, it's not that hard, uh, and it shouldn't be.
But the, the current ordinance doesn't allow for that.
Right.
So, and I know that you and I had a conversation about this back when you were my liaison.
We did.
This is crazy that this, this ordinance is in place and each time we, we do the application, we get through it and we kind of forget about it until the next time.
Right.
It just needs some attention.
Right.
That's all I'm asking.
I think what we really need to do is hire a grant writer for the county, and it takes a lot of pressure off the individuals. Uh, for what we would make in money, that pays, position would pay for itself.
Oh, yeah, and that's something we should pursue, but I agree with you, Jack, sooner than later.
Go ahead, Chris.
I think that, uh, that ordinance was put in place because I believe in the USDA grant, people have three of them open within the county at the same time. And there were a couple open whenever they tried to set up the tenth district for the sewer line down River Road. And I, and I think that's what all that was put in place. But I can see, we, we had an opportunity to buy some training equipment through the state grant here a while back, and he's right. By the time they tell you about it, and
Go through the process.
You can't go through the process in time to write the grant like any minutes submitted, so, so we lost out on that one.
Well, one option maybe to have, um, the liaison to whatever department approve it and then notice be given to the entire commissioners that, that that was done.
That would be a good option.
Will require, the way that it's written and the way the application looks, it will require you working with the County Council because there's, all their signatures are on that also. So, I, I don't know everything, the ins and outs of it, but it looks like both entities are going to have to work together to get this thing.
Sounds good.
Yeah, and I agree with that, and, and I think Polly's agreeing in the fact that we possibly get a grant writer and we pay them a percentage of what they, you know, one percent of every grant, a fifty thousand dollar grant, and we do that throughout the year. Uh, the county's not out of dime, you know, they don't bring in money, they don't get paid. So, I, I think it's something that the council needs to look at, I know, I think that the commissioners support that. Uh, it would be a job description that we need to be put together. Uh, but again, it would be on a percentage basis, and, and I think that that person would be able to help everyone sitting in this room to do that job for you.
You couldn't have an employee on a percentage only, um, but it could be contracted.
Contracted, yes.
Yeah, so somebody could contract and say, I'll write these for you for whatever percentage, and, uh, that way they're not a county employee.
Right. And, and since pay's attached to it, we'd have to get council's blessing on it, but I think that it's something that we definitely need to look in, because it's not an expense to the county. Thanks, Dylan. Any other elected official?
Before Jack's time is up, it'd be nice to see the county acknowledge him, since it is National EMA Week this week, for all the hard dedicated work that he does.
Well, thanks for informing us on that. Thank you, Jack, appreciate it. So it wasn't just us that forgot it, it's kind of like Valentine's Day, you know, everybody else got to take it too.
Let's forgive that.
Right. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Any, uh, other elected officials, department heads, public comment? Sam?
I got two found, I've only got three minutes, Joel, you know, that's what I want to bring to you here in a minute, so I'm going to let you speak on it, okay?
Yep.
Openly. We've already discussed this three different times, I've got a question to the, the county attorney. I'm not very smart, I'm sure a normal attorney by no means. If I requested public records from you, is there a timeline on response for people to get back public records? I know I dealt with this when I was sheriff, and it, it's like, you're hard with stuff, you know what I mean? Is there a timeframe?
There is a timeframe to respond as to when those, uh, records may be available. Um, and, um, the statute recognizes that creating public records or, or providing for public records is only one of the tasks that, you know, that people have. And so they have to take in consideration, you know, their other obligations as well. Um, and, uh, yeah, and it's, uh, it, it is a process, you know, I know we're trying to work through some, some kinks on, on, on that. One of the things that we've talked about before is, is, um, we need to have some training sessions on like ADA and things like that. And so, uh, and also on the, um, uh, audit, uh, folks that come in and cause problems and, and people's, uh, departments and how to address that and deal with that. So, it, it, that needs to be included in that and so that we can, you know, make sure that we're doing it right.
I'm still dealing with, I haven't been sheriff for over a year, you know, I'm still dealing with stuff that I get, and I was kind of wondering, you know.
We, we did.
You're, you're getting required?
I guess, I guess, I guess some stuff, yeah, and I just tell them I'm not a sheriff anymore.
Right.
I just respond, I think that's my, that's my end goal right there on that part of it.
Right.
Did, did we not set up, since I've said here, a timeframe whether someone requests them digitally or verbally? We set a ordinance up that we had X amount of time to deliver those documents. And forgive me, I don't know the exact, but, but if you, if you request them digitally, there's a timeframe. And then I believe if they were verbally requested, there was a timeframe, and you guys can help it. I didn't dream it, I, I know we've got it, I don't-
Again, the timeframe is based on letting the requester know when those records would be available.
So once that's been established, then when do you respond?
It's, like I said, there's some kinks in the process and working those out.
I think that we put on there that you had to, that we had to acknowledge the receipt.
That's correct, acknowledge.
It wasn't a fact that we'll have it to you in three days after acknowledgement, it was just a fact of acknowledgement.
But once that's acknowledged back, they'll go get back to you from, I don't know, seven to ten days. And then that's not done, then where does that stand?
I know that we've talked to, I've been, I've sat in public access attorney meetings, uh, and he, he touches on a lot of this and says the same thing. People have jobs to do, it is not top priority as they move forward with their jobs, those come first, this is secondary, and he's made that very clear. I've sat in a couple of those meetings with him, uh, so.
What council person is that here?
The Public Access Attorney for the State.
Is there, is there a specific one or is it more than one?
The main, well, I can't remember what his name is right offhand, he's at the AIC conference, he's at the Commissioners Conference.
Is that Brad? Is that name Tom or whatever?
What? He's been with them for a while, uh, but anyway.
Well, the reality of it is, Alan, that they, uh, the department has to respond when they can, or?
I've been waiting since October.
Well, and?
October.
My next.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry. My, my next is Mr. Lowell, I spoke to Mr. Lowell on, what, three occasions ago for the last week, I mean, two or three occasions.
You have?
And, and I'm not here to justify anybody's work or how they do or what they don't, I'm not doing that at all. But when you guys appointed or didn't appoint people at your meeting here three weeks or a month ago, I'm not sure. Uh, and a person didn't get appointed for whatever reason, you appoint people and that's your call, whether you get appointed, they don't get appointed, whatever. But I just want to clarify something, so I can ease my own mind about this. This gentleman, I believe, if I'm wrong, please tell me I'm wrong, so I can then go address him at the meeting I'm getting ready to go attend. That this gentleman was not notified by neither three commissioners prior to that day. Which, and I don't know what the rules and regulations are, um, he wasn't talked to prior to that, but hey, we're maybe going this direction or that direction. And I don't know myself, wasn't in the meeting. But, out courtesy for a military veteran of this country and an employee of this county, right, wrong, whether they're doing a good job, bad job, and different, Mr. Lowell, we talked about this.
We did.
And could you explain to me or to the public how it was handled and maybe why? And I guess the end of my, for the, the latter part of that, has anybody talked to him, has, has any of three commissioners spoken with him since his release? Nope.
Yeah. I had, I didn't speak to him since he's been released, but I, I caught, Joe called me, and I talked to him and told him that it was covered. That the VSW had complained about him, and it was time for him to retire.
Was this, was this after the meeting?
Before.
This is, so you talked to him prior to the meeting of, of-
Not re-apartment, or this, not, not re-apartment, yes, sir, I sure did.
Mr. Lowell?
I've been pretty candid with you about this.
Absolutely.
Um, you asked me very, uh, specific questions, and I told you very specific answers.
Yes, sir.
I'm the VSO's liaison. That particular Wednesday, he was not reappointed, no reason was given, no explanation, he was not reappointed. At that point in time, it was the decision of the commissioners that we were going to reappoint a new VSO officer. I stated that I would speak with that individual, Joe Goldman. This was on Wednesday, that I would meet with him Monday and have a sit-down discussion with him concerning this. For whatever reason, he didn't get reap, he, it didn't happen, and he began to question that. He called Bob Curry. He did not call me, for whatever reason. And my understanding is, is that's when he was told he would be replaced. Okay? That's what I know about it. Did any three of us talk to him? No, we did not. I shared this very conversation with Gary Burton, and it was not handled appropriately, in my mind. And I shared that very grievance with Gary. And he said, yes, that, so, that wasn't all particularly, you know, the way it should go. Okay? I'm a veteran myself.
Yes.
I'll be damned if I'm going to treat one that bad. But I'm telling you, and I've been very candid with you from the minute you started asking me about this.
Yes, sir.
Where I stood on this and what I knew, and I just told you what I know.
And, and, and you also told me, and this, we've known each other a long time.
Long time.
You also told me that this was handled improperly.
I'm sorry?
It was handled improperly.
It, it was, and I shared that with Gary Burton.
Right.
Did I not, Gary? I sat right there across the table and said, Gary, this-
But Bob made me call him, and then, and, and, you know, Bob told me, he said that he talked to Mr. Goldman prior to the day of the appointment, if it's not an appointment. So Bob said either he'd spoken to him and let him know that they was going to go a different direction.
I cannot, I cannot-
No, I'm, I'm, Bob said he spoke to him prior to that morning, Wednesday, when you made your appointment.
We're getting way past three minutes here.
So you spoke to him prior to that Wednesday, Bob?
Yes, sir, I sure did.
That's all I need.
His, his appointment was put on hold, there, that's what was discussed in the meeting, the day that we appointed everyone, that position was put on hold. Uh, every, one of these commissioners can attest to that. Also, they can attest to a two to three month process of complaints coming in from fellow veterans needing assistance.
And I don't, and I don't want to get into it.
I, I'm going to clarify it. If we're going to bring it up, we're going to clarify it.
Let's clarify, but Bob's making a statement right now that he is over to talk to Mr. Goldman. Prior to the appointment day on Wednesday, he'd already discussed with him that he was, he was not going to have a job. So, there's an issue somewhere, because that's not what Mr. Goldman says, because he walks in on here on the next day to get his phone service.
He wasn't here on appointment day?
No, the next day, because he was that a military veteran on that Wednesday you, you pointed, didn't appointment. But he comes in the next day to get his phone looked at and kind of realizes, well, maybe he needs to talk to a commissioner, and he calls Mr. Curry.
And, and we talked to Joel that day that we did not, we put that appointment on hold. Joel and I spoke, and he was to go talk to Joe.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not talking about Mr., I'm talking about Mr. Curry, Mr. Curry's made a statement that he's already talked to Joe Goldman prior to that appointment day, that he would not have a job.
Joe called you, right? Joe called you?
The day, that, that was on a Thursday, the day after the appointment day, Mr. Curry is there-
There was nobody appointed at that time, that position was on hold.
Mr. Curry said he's over to talk to-
We're going to go ahead and move on, we're about, uh, ten minutes into this.
Me and, me and Joe have been friends for a long, long, uh, long-
You're also a veteran, aren't you, Bob?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's all I need to know.
Auditor comments?
I've got another question actually, please, I'd like to get some clarification from something great saved this morning. Who is the liaison for the County Highway Department?
That would be me.
Did that not, was there not discussion previously, whenever there was like a question about people's spouses working there and things like that and everything else about?
No conflict of interest.
I, I appear to have conflict of interest, I'm asking if there was not discussion during that discussion period, if it was not decided that Bob was going to take over that.
That was a year before.
That was, that was last, that was a year ago.
Last year I was, we switched it up, each year we changed. Alan?
Mark?
I'm going to come up here.
Jeff, I'm sorry.
I'm going to come up here because I have a soft voice. Is this on?
It's on.
Okay, good.
It's red.
Alright, thank you, good morning commissioners, I have three or four quick items, they'll be quick, less than three minutes. Okay, the first item, uh, relates to, uh, last Friday, uh, I want to state for the record that, um, I know there's a lot of people in the county who complain about last Friday's response. I've been working for, I'm retired now, but I've been working for a million years. And every time we have a snowstorm afternoon on a weekday, the, the streets get totally messed up because people are driving on them, and the plows don't have a chance to get, get, get out and get it done. So, you know, it's, it was bad, but it was, it's, it's just one of those things, right? So, that's the first thing. Second thing is, um, actually two items for the, uh, Highway Superintendent. I didn't hear Fish Creek Road in the Morgan County, Morgan Township, uh, roads, is that not in Morgan Township?
It is, and you may be correct, it wasn't in what I had at the day.
Okay, it wasn't in there, so, uh, and so that's the second thing. And the third thing related to that is, I, I'm, I'm a little surprised that Bandy Road is, is, uh, classified as a thoroughfare because compared to all the other roads around there, it doesn't really feel like a thoroughfare, but let's, let's go with that. Uh, so my last point is, and I, I confess complete ignorance on this topic. I, I don't know, uh, um, where we are with respect to our plans with respect to the jail, okay? Has there been any meeting on that this year?
Last conversation, I think, uh, was the council, they sent some findings of funds available to make a payment, and that was the last conversation that we had.
So, so my, my only input on this is, uh, and it's just, you know, if we're going to do it, we need to get going on it, right?
So I asked Anton, uh, several council meetings ago.
Okay.
If he could come up with a ballpark figure.
Yeah.
And he said he could.
Yeah.
And he's been busy, wasn't at the last meeting, and I didn't make the previous one, but I'm sure he can present the commissioners with a ballpark number. At which point we can all work together again on this and maybe, maybe come up to a resolve.
Can I put, uh?
Yeah.
I, I am currently working on that.
Oh, you are?
Yes.
Okay, well, I thought he was, but, yeah, so Polly's working on getting a-
We're working in tandem, but, yeah, we're looking into-
So there you go, I mean, we're, we're just kind of getting a, and we know it isn't an exact figure.
Right.
But that way it gives everybody an idea when we walk into the room, where, where we can and cannot go.
Yeah, okay, thank you, that's, that's, uh, if we're going to do it, my father, I'm, that was a joke, I was going to tell you about what my father's telling, but I won't do that.
Thanks, Jeff. Anyone else?
I know I've already went, but, uh, and, and this is not a back and forth at all with the, the road conditions over the weekend. We got hammered with five inches of very wet snow, followed up by very cold temperatures on Saturday. We did get some help from Mother Nature on Sunday. Went to school on time on Monday morning. Good job.
Yeah, that's saying a lot, because that, that snow came in four hours.
We got hammered, we got dunked on and went to school on Monday on time, no delay. I don't know what more you could expect.
And it wasn't just county issues, the hot state highways were shut down, two thirty-one was closed, forty-six was closed, uh, we can go on and on. So no, the Highway Department did an extremely good job, I went out in my district and drove the roads the next- did an extremely good job. I went out in my district and drove the roads the next day and a lot of it were down to bare pavement. So.
We went on fast, had calls to go to Red on Friday evening and, uh, Saturday morning, people were running up down my road pretty hard.
Yeah.
Sure runs on Potter's Hill too. And I said, daughter set traffic all out here on Walker Hill for three hours. That was a state three hours.
Good job on the county.
Yep. Sheila? Dana?
Yeah, I have a couple things for you today. Um, first is, they're both personnel policies. First is, uh, policy two oh five. It's the introductory period. Um, we revised that recently so that, uh, first responders, including highway department personnel, could have access to short and long-term disability and life insurance. And, um, I, I had also had in there health insurance and got snuck in there. Um, but health insurance, providing them with health insurance, uh, and not other employees for that first ninety days, uh, was, I'm talking to Mr. Burton, uh, was not a, was, was not fair. And so, uh, the concern is, well, what if they get hurt on the job doing their, their duties? Uh, but there is workman's compensation that they would get for that if they were hurt on job. So they don't have to have that insurance, uh, protection. Um, so this policy, um, change would be to, um, remove, uh, the health insurance from the last paragraph and also added a sentence at the end that this includes the highway department as well as the regularly, regularly recognized first responders, uh, just to make that clear in the policy. So, has the commissioner, will VSO choose to?
And guys, we've already passed and approved this policy. It's just an amendment. The health insurance was added in there by mistake. Uh, they still get the life insurance, short term or long term of disability, the same as all the other first responder departments do. Uh, but when it comes to hiring new employee, the ninety days is crucial to make sure that they're going to, uh, stay, be with us before we put out that expense. And that's in all these departments. Obviously they'll get health insurance if they stay there ninety days. Uh, but the main concern here was to cover, uh, accidents that would take somebody's life or put them out of service for some time. This insurance will cover them. And like Dana said, they're on the job working, this comp kicks in. Any other discussion? Do I hear a motion to approve county policy two oh five, uh, discussing introductory period?
I can make a motion to adopt that policy two oh five.
Have a motion by Bob down here, second?
Second.
Second by Joel. All in favor?
Aye.
The next personnel policy is seven oh two, which is the drug and alcohol use, uh, drug-free workplace policy. And, uh, this was brought, uh, to the commissioners at the previous meeting and it was discussed. And, uh, it was determined that it should go out to the department heads and the local officials to look through it. Uh, and it could ask any questions, um, or, uh, you know, request changes or, or whatever. Um, there was one response and that was Chris and, uh, he had a, some good questions. They're more procedural how it's going to work than what has to be in the, the policy itself. But they were really good questions and so, uh, I responded to him on those. Um, so there was one word that happened to be changed. Um, but otherwise, uh, is, is what we brought, or I brought, um, back to last meeting. Uh, it is long. I think it's about fourteen pages. So, and we don't need to read it. We did discuss it, but, uh, some, uh, key points is, you know, the first page is policy statement. The next page lists what the employees' responsibilities are. Um, and then who the supervisors' responsibility, and then the commissioners' designated, uh, representatives' responsi-, uh, responsibilities. Um, the, there are five instances that may trigger a, uh, a, a drug test, uh, drug and alcohol test. One would be if there's reasonable suspicion that, uh, any employee is under the influence of alcohol or building when he uses or is impaired by use of a controlled substance while in the course and scope of employment. So, and explained what, uh, reasonable, uh, suspicion would be. So in that case, if you suspect an employee while they're in, working, uh, is impaired, uh, you can, that's one, uh, point where they could do a drug and alcohol test. Um, the next is someone who, uh, has been out because of, uh, previous drug issue that they would be, have to do a, a screen before they came back. And then, uh, for a period of time after that, they would have, uh, tests done as well to make sure they're maintaining, uh, the, like not using drug or alcohol. Um, the next would be upon the occurrence of onsite accidents or unsafe on duty or job-related activities, uh, that pose a, a danger. Uh, if, an occurrence of that would trigger, uh, drug and alcohol testing, um, pre-employment testing. And lastly is random testing. Um, and so those are the five, uh, times that, uh, drug and alcohol testing, uh, would, would be used. Um, there is a list of the substances that are tested, tested for. Um, and one thing I want to make clear is that, um, a lot of people use CBD oil or CBD gummies or, or whatever. Um, they are not supposed to contain THC, but as they're not regulated, um, they're often, cause they come from the same place, contaminated with THC. So employees are putting themselves at risk of, you know, they need to make sure what they have is pure or, um, because it, again, if that THC's in there, it will give a positive result. Um, so we went, went back to make sure that doesn't happen. Um, let's see, there's, uh, discussion on prescribing, prescription drug use and notice of impairment. So just because somebody has a prescription doesn't mean that they can work taking a certain medication that would potentially cause concerns and, you know, you don't want a equipment operator out there taking oxycodone for a sore back and, uh, so that, that kind of thing. So, uh, that's laid out, um, it's laid out how reasonable suspicion, suspicion testing would go. Um, and so all those separate ones we've discussed, um, discusses how the random testing would go. Um, there is also a, a, a section on voluntary, uh, rehabilitation and counseling. So what this part of the policy does, it encourages our employees that if they have an issue with drug or alcohol use, that there's a process that they can go to, um, and as long as it hadn't interfered with their job, that they, you know, there's protections for or not protected for them, but there's a way to work with them.
Help.
To try to get them the help that they need and not necessarily go against them. Um, they could, uh, possibly use FNL, a, uh, time for that. Um, there's a discussion on how the procedure goes. Um, and it explains about the role of commissioners' designated representative is, um, Mr. Burton, I talked about this, uh, since there's no HR person yet, uh, the designated person, uh, who, the rest of so choose would be the liaison for that particular department. So if something happens in a department, the designated person would be the commissioner, uh, that's the liaison, uh, for that area. Let's see.
And those test results would come back to that liaison for that department as well?
So there's, uh, times where the test is not being, uh, accurate because it's been diluted, out of temperature. Um, there's, uh, procedure, someone has a shy bladder, uh, as well. Um, and if, if there needs to be direct observers, patient, uh, how that works. Um, the disciplinary consequences, uh, violations of this policy will result in disciplinary action up to and including dismissal from employment. Uh, contingent offers of employment will be revoked for any applicant in violation of this policy. Um, it does talk about supervisor training that will help them identify someone that might be impaired. Um, and there is a portion that, that says that they records, uh, in confidentiality, how that, how that works. Um, so that is the, the policy. Um, as I said, it's been out there for different department heads and the local officials to, to look at. And so I offer to the commissioners for approval.
So any questions? We've beat this thing up and down quite some time now.
As long as the department heads have, have weighed in and they've gotten whatever was on the.
Everybody's had an opportunity for two weeks here, so, um, and as this thing evolves, we'll get with the health department and work those issues out. Uh, again, it states in here that those, uh, test results come back to the department head, the county attorney, which is HR, and the liaison to that department. Uh, so.
And I just want to, um, also let everyone know how that works. We have, um, two MAs in the office. They are the ones handling the drug tests. I don't even see them anymore. So we went strictly to those two. They know that, with this new policy, what they're supposed to do. So am I no longer supposed to send those to Maddie for new hires or have them send that to Maddie for new hires? Who do they need to?
We're getting ready to talk about that here. Just, yeah, a little bit. Um, let's go ahead back to this real quick. And do I hear a motion to approve seven oh two, uh, drug and alcohol, uh, use and drug-free workplace policy?
Okay, motion.
Got a motion by Joel down here, second?
Sorry.
All in favor? Aye. Is there a signature copy on this?
No, it's that personnel policy, so it could just be included up in the manuals. And, uh, I believe that's it for today.
Okay.
Pushing the time over here. Commissioners?
Comments, concerns? We've had some concerns from department heads and, and I spoke to the auditor about this and we're all in agreeance. Uh, the personnel files for the employees need to stay with the department that those people are employed with. We have a payroll department that will include a application, uh, their W two, their insurance request or, or concerns and, uh, a copy of driver's license for liability insurance. Other than that, those personnel files stay with EMS, highway, so on and so forth, because those are where those people are employed. If there's disciplinary actions, those are to be done in-house by that department. Uh, I think we discussed that. Is there any other concerns? Uh, with that being said, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve all personnel files to stay in the departments of employment.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion by Joel down here, second?
Sorry.
All in favor? Aye. So those would go to the department head and then they would forward it on if they're hired to the payroll department. That way the department is controlling what's going on in their department and their employees.
I'll get a here. Can I comment?
You can.
First of all, if they do a drug test and it comes back and the person's already started, we've got to make sure the department heads.
Yeah, that can't happen.
Are, are following up, making sure that that employee does not start if they didn't pass it or if there's some questions. That does come back to us as a personnel file issue. I'm okay if the department keeps their stuff and I'm okay with the payrolls of it. But again, there's a three-day period when you're processing a new hire, and I'm talking new hires only. Um, again, that process for new hires requires that you have to file papers within three days. That also includes passing a, a urine screen or drug test or whatever. And, and if they don't pass, we do need immediate notice because it stops the process.
And Sheila's bringing up a good point because that happened and it shouldn't have. Uh, and I'm just going to leave it at that. I'm not going to mention departments or situations. Anything else?
I have nothing.
Thank you, Sheila. Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everyone.